Just in between, we don't want anybody missing.
All right.
Steve would be up in just a minute, he went to pull up and bring up some more papers. Well, what we wanted to talk, pardon me? Oh, yes, this is Dave with Cochrane Engineering.
Hi.
We've met a couple of times.
Van Leeuwen.
For the record.
Van Leeuwen.
Van Leeuwen.
Yes. We met with Cochrane Engineering. What started this was, as you all think back, we voted to hire Cochrane as the engineer when we sent out the RFQs for a water project. And so, in the process of designing one of the water projects, it started making more sense, in our opinions and with the engineers' opinions, to turn a project into something more than just a short water main, with as bad as the water lines are in town. So, there's been a facilities plan done and some other looking into the water line situations, there's been some other things looked at. And so, we sat down and looked at several areas that had problems. And then, out of that area, we started condensing the project down to meet what we think the city's rate structure would pay for. So, this project is not fixing every water line in town if you vote to do this project, but it does fix the top six areas that we think need to be fixed. All of those numbers on that map, and Dave will get into this and he's got some other handouts, but all of those water lines are asbestos water lines. And so, some of them are causing volume issues, some of them are causing, definitely, most of them are causing maintenance issues and repairs and just the fact of the makeup of the lines, of what they're made out of, has put them in what we call the top six priority lines to be replaced. Cochrane took it, you know, instead of us doing just the St. Mary's water line, they went ahead and put some preliminary numbers together for the total cost of that project, and they're going to present that to you tonight. The thing that I wanted to point out to you, if you consider this project, is that for those of you that was on the board last year, the rate structure that was voted in over the performo that was done, that took us out to 2018, you know, we can continue on that out, the cost of doing this project all at one time, if the city gets the funding, you've got the bonding capacity, it's already been voted in, there's interest rates are really low right now, all these things that make this a good time to do this, we don't have to change any rates to pay for this project. It's already set in the performo. It's just that instead of doing a small project this year, having it designed, bid it, get the work done, then next year, hire an engineering firm, design it, bid it, get the work done, and so on and so forth, we would bring that all down to one project, and then pay for it over that timeframe, whatever that timeframe would end up being. If the project cost takes us five years to pay for, or six years, depending on what the debt payment on that would be, the funding's already in place, is the main thing that we wanted to point out. Dave's going to give you some numbers.
Before any questions, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Probably asbestos is a health concern because of vessel people.
Absolutely.
Is there any health concern for asbestos water line?
Only when we're fixing it. We have to, as employees, as people working on it, we have to go to asbestos training every year. We have rules to follow to when we make a repair, we have to, our respirator systems that we have to wear, we have to have water, we have to keep the fragments down, we have to do a negative exposure process every year, which, I mean, that's just what we do for doing that, but we have to hire a company to come in, and we have to simulate all the things that we are allowed to do. And then, it does cost to get rid of it. So, there's no health risk associated with the water line itself transmitting, letting the water transmit through. The health risk comes when our guys, city employees and contractors and stuff are working on it.
Second question is, are there, you're suggesting that these projects be done under one contract to a single contractor, or?
No, I would suggest that we look at doing it under one project as far as the engineering, have it all designed as.
Understand the engineering.
Then, depending on what you guys want to do, if we do it under one project, one contractor, the project, I believe the dollar amount is going to be large enough that we would get more bang for our buck doing it under one project. I will warn you, I believe that you're going to have some contractors within a certain radius of town that might not have the bonding capacity to do a job this size, and then they might want to come in and say, hey, in order for us to bid on this, this job needs to be smaller, or we can't bid on the job. You might hear some of that if you choose to do that, but you will get the bigger bang for your buck by doing it under one project. Would you agree?
Yes.
Because what would happen if you'd done it under multiple contracts, is like the tie-ins and these things, if it went bad, whose fault was it? Was this line not quite where it was supposed to be? It's just to be a much cleaner project if we'd done it all under one.
But these aren't meticulous water lines.
No, but you.
I mean, there's one up here and there's one over there.
Right, but again, I mean, as, when this project's over and we go to do another one, you know, we'd have to, well, who put this water line in? We'd have to pull, I mean, it'd just be cleaner to do it under one, and I think you'd get a much better price.
The pricing issue is what occurred to me.
Yeah, much better price.
You'd get better pricing upon the scope of the project.
Much better.
Are you going to describe like where number one starts and ends and all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to go ahead and get it up?
I think yes, I think we turn it over to Dave.
I can, one of those out there, I've got it. What Terry's handing out is a individual map of each one of those projects, one through six. And then, I'm also giving you a cost estimate that is numbered one through six. I think probably the best way to do this is just try to be to go through the projects one by one.
Are these priorities or not?
Yes, they've all, I mean, they made the top.
I mean, is number one?
Uh.
Let's see. It doesn't look like it. I wouldn't say number one would be number one.
I don't, no, far as I know, Terry, we didn't put it.
Okay, all right. Just tops.
Does everybody have the drawings and the cost estimate? There's plenty more.
For your information, Mayor, the number one priority was going to be St. Mary's Road. That was the number one.
Right, yeah, okay.
Is there a better place, would it be easier, would it be more visible for everyone? Should I squeeze it towards the middle, or do you want to have a preference?
I'd put it where your chair is.
Okay, I'll try to go through these projects one through six. Feel free to jump in and ask any questions when they come up. The one thing I would say about these plans is they're all conceptual. Between meeting with Terry and Steve, we've come up with these projects. The locations, these may not be exact, it may be on one side of the road or the other, or in the middle of the road.
If you want to see it, feel free to move up here. Toby, Carl, whoever. Okay.
Just take one of those, Carl, Carl.
Yeah, take Carl.
Take one of them.
Just sit.
Carl.
Just sit.
Carl.
Yeah.
Did you want to?
I'm the chairman.
Toby? You ready? All right.
Okay, project one is located at the north end of town along Little Rock Road. It runs from Matthews Drive down to Riverview Drive. This would be a new eight-inch water main that we'd be putting in, replacing a four-inch main, and we'd be looking at, right at 2,300 millennial feet of water main for this project. As you can see, we start up at Matthews Drive, come down past the tennis courts, the baseball and softball fields, and then we tie back into existing water mains, down at Riverview Drive.
Does that set up like a future?
Well, actually.
Like expansion up that way, or?
You know, not so much. It's just replacing a four-inch asbestos line now. Pretty much, pretty much, the rule of thumb now is to upsize, if that's where you was going.
But for some reason, it's a, something would then extend?
There would be plenty of water.
Okay, so that'd be no problem with an inch.
Yeah, I mean, you'd still have to, you'd still have to pay attention to what was feeding it, but you wouldn't have a bottleneck either.
Okay.
I think we kind of took the mentality to replace everything with larger mains. You may end up with some smaller diameter mains in between the new mains, but eventually over time, as you continue to replace mains, you end up with all large diameter mains.
It doesn't add substantially to the cost of a project, pipe differential is negligible.
Correct.
Maybe I shouldn't be asking, maybe I'm getting too far ahead of ourselves. Just put on this one, do we really have any service past, past Yanks Field?
No. That is also, this is also the line that's used for the interconnect with the county. In an emergency situation, this wouldn't be the line that fed the town.
Back. Oh, back, okay, all right, gotcha.
Yeah, if you, if you look up at the top, yeah, if you look up at the top, it says existing interconnect.
Is that the only place where we're tied it down? No? Okay.
There's another connection at the top of Riverview.
Okay, right.
Riverview and Fort North Fort.
Okay.
I get it. And then also, if you look at the cost estimate for project one, this is a pretty straightforward project. The biggest ticket item there is your water main itself. Pretty straightforward project, nothing really unique about this one.
Toby, on an output, do you?
The way we place, we would expect the existing main to get abandoned.
Just leave it in there. Okay. Anyway, I have to worry about disposal, or if you did solid rock.
That's something we have talked about. Terry and Steve, they kind of have a pretty good idea where we'll be dealing with rock and where we won't. As we proceed with planning of the project, we would, we would deal with those guys and dig, in strategic areas, dig test pits, figure out what the rock depth is so that we could estimate that, it would be a known going into the, going into the project. We don't want that to be a surprise and additional costs to city wants to expect.
We're in, this preliminary cost estimate is, we.
Where's we need to get rid of this asbestos line?
We'll leave it in the ground, just as a thing. Yeah, there's a, there's a standard construction practice for leaving it in place.
Is there any way that we can kind of move that over to the tennis courts? If you guys want to repair them?
When?
And make a real big repair? Maybe we can get some new tennis courts.
Yeah, the location needs to subject to change, they can, if you want it there.
No, no doubt.
Just to explain the cost estimates a little bit, they're all structured the same. As you go down the column, the first bold number is the subtotal for construction. The next number there is a 10% contingency. At this point in planning a project, there's going to be things come up that we haven't thought of at this point, that we're unaware of, so that's where that 10% contingency number comes from. Below that is engineering and construction inspection fees, and then your very bottom number is a total of all those. So, that's where these, that's where this cost estimate, how we developed this. As someone mentioned, this cost estimate does not include any solid rock excavation, so at this time, that's not included in there. That's one of the reasons for the contingencies, is that if it does come up, that should be covered in the contingency.
$10,000 in untouched, $2,000 feet of solid rock excavation. Not even, not even close. It won't be, I mean, you can't get somebody to move the drill in and even consider doing anything to it.
Well, I don't, at this time, we're not anticipating that any of these projects are.
I know, but we have, we have just recently completed some projects that ended up with some contingencies that we really worked through and had a lot of homeowners upset, and so I think we're going to take a much, I hope the board decides to take a much harder look at contingencies and understanding how much more money we're going to need at the end of the project to pay for the project. Well, you know, to speak on that, these right now are preliminary to give us an idea, when and if you vote to do this, there will be actual designs, actual cost estimates put back together, and we will go out and we'll take the excavator in the back and we will, we will check for these things so that they're. I don't expect to read my bracket either. But when the engineering company is giving us presentations saying $10,000 is covered, I'm backpedaling already. I mean, I'm not getting after it, it's just, I don't, we need to hear worst case for contingencies and not.
And our approach to this, as Terry said, these cost estimates are preliminary, we would probably come back to you at least three times with updated cost estimates as we proceed through the project. We'll put together our, after we've done our fieldwork, we'll put together our initial conceptual design, we'll be able to better estimate costs at that point. As we continue to fine tune the plans, we'll fine tune our cost estimates, we'll locate things like you're talking about, areas where there is rock, we'll get good estimates of what that is going to be, and we'll just continue to better our cost estimates as we go. I guess we would say, just with the information we have available right now, this is the, this is the best estimate we can give you.
Hold on a minute.
Unless there's any more questions on number one, we can move on to number two. You'll see number two here is kind of in the middle of town. This being the school right here, you see just in the top center of your page, and we're heading south of the school on Eighth Street. In this situation, we're replacing a six-inch, an existing six-inch main, we'll be putting in approximately 730 feet of eight-inch to replace that existing main. The new main goes from Ridgeway Street down to Jefferson Street.
Didn't we just, what did we just do when they got the performing arts center from Washington to, didn't we, what did we do across?
Oh, we did nothing there, too.
From Washington to Ridgeway?
Yeah, from Washington, from Washington to Ridgeway, there was an eight-inch main installed that goes on the right side of the road on Eighth Street.
So, we can eliminate?
Yeah, at this point, we can stop that. Now, when they installed that, they didn't connect any of the residents to that line, so that would have to be.
Yeah, so what, yeah, that's a good point. So, what they, what we could do there, Dave, is from Washington down, we would have to, we could come in and tie in that Ridgeway line, and then bring the customers over to the existing, and we can eliminate that asbestos. They're still on an asbestos line up there, that was never.
But you got a new main in there?
They're going down to that arts facility. It's the city's, but the rest, the town's not on it. That's correct.
So, this main running down.
The one block between all eight and three?
Eighth Street. Are these homes going to be connected to this main?
There's three homes there?
Yes, we need to get them connected to that.
There's six, or there's eight, or there's three? We just want to. The second we put in was from Washington to Ridgeway. There's three homes on that stretch.
They're not on the new line.
They're not on the new line. So, you'd eliminate that footage and add the connections.
Okay. Saving money already.
Yeah.
This will go down.
So, that's probably 250 feet or so through there.
Okay.
And then, to quickly go through the cost estimate on number two, on this one, there is a considerable amount of cost attributable to the service connections. Obviously, it's a residential area, there's lots of service connections there, so that you can see that is well over $12,000, is a $64,000 construction cost.
Where's that at?
It's items number eight and number nine.
Transfer services.
The number eight would be for services that are on the opposite, houses on the opposite side of the road where we have to cross with service, and then number nine is where the services are on the same side as the water main. That's the difference in cost between the two.
Dig up the street for that?
We have an hour for this, so we need to be calm and some sort of good.
Move on to number three. See, we're still kind of staying in the middle of town. I think we're about two blocks south of the football stadium. And the water plant is in the lower right-hand corner of your page to help you get oriented. Again, putting in 670 feet of eight-inch main, and that would be going from Jefferson Street to Market Street. One, one item to note on this project is there is a retaining wall roughly halfway between Jefferson Street and Market Street that we would have to work around. Our initial assumptions, we're going to have to get out in the street to get around that retaining wall, that is going to, that item will make that project cost a little bit more. And then, again, on this one, the service transfers are a significant portion of the project, roughly $20,000 of the $70,000 goes toward service connections.
What are you tying into on Market, the old line? Or a new one?
The eight-inch.
That's a new one?
Yeah.
So, we're still on the old?
You are?
Might be, yeah.
Yeah.
That's not where he's on, he's not on that. No, it's going to cast iron line.
On the old.
Yes. Let's move on to number four, if we've covered everything on three. So, you see number four, we're getting towards the south side of town, and again, you'll see the water plant kind of in the center of your page, just to the left of the new, where the new mains up there at Market and Seventh Streets. This main comes down Market Street along Seventh to, I'm assuming that's pronounced Gabberay?
Yes.
Gabberay?
Yeah.
Gabberay, okay. Down Gabberay, and right now, what we're expecting to do is go down Gabberay and then follow the railroad over to South Tenth Street and connect the existing eight-inch water main there. Again, that, that alignment's subject to further review on the design. Our first look at it, that seemed like the best route, that keeps us from having to cross the railroad, so that was, that was our initial thought as to what the best route would be. Further review, we might find something better. That's roughly 1,800 feet of eight-inch water main. And again, pretty, nothing really unique about this design, just other than we'll be working along the railroad, there might be some permitting, permitting associated with working around the railroad.
Did they put new water lines in?
No, we're.
On Gabberay?
No, we've repaired them many times, jobs at times. We fix leaks in there all the time.
Down off the channel.
Yeah.
We fix them. I thought they put new water lines in, and it'd be good sewer.
No, that's a, there's a line that runs all the way up, but that's not this line.
You're right. What did we put in?
Put sewer, I thought they put water, new river.
Okay. I remember something.
There's a new one going down to where Bilt Best was.
You all taking the long tracks right next to his?
It went through our front yard and all, I thought they put a new water with the sewer.
No, right there, tent, there's a new valve, but just past that, it's transit. There's nothing else on four, we can move on to five. Along with replacing some faulty mains, this, this project's just good planning for our system as a whole. Along St. Genevieve Road right now, right here, this is an existing 12-inch. Right now, there, these aren't distinguished between the two, what's eight and what would be 12. I think what we would want to do here is continue this 12 down towards Highway 61 on this way. That's just going to be good planning. If there's growth here in the future, we'll have adequate water supply out there. Again, that's something that probably need to have some more, need to put some more thought into, see what the, see what the city's expectations are for what, what's going to be happening out this way and what the water supply needs are going to be. We're starting, when we start off down here, this is near the, I believe this is an O'Reilly and Save-A-Lot down here. Come up Triangle Drive to St. Genevieve Road, and over here, this is your country mark to kind of help give you some perspective as to where you are. So, we'd be improving the main along there. Some of the, that has a total millennial footage of just under 2,300 millennial feet. Again, that would be, that'd be a combination of eight-inch and 12-inch, I think, is what we'd be looking at doing there. One of the additional costs associated with that project would be getting under St. Genevieve Road, that would have to be a boring encasement, and some additional costs there. And then, there are a significant number of service connections on this project as And then, we get to number six, which is the last one we have. This was the original project that kind of started all this, out on Seraphin and St. Mary's. This is the most expensive project of the six. Primary reason for that is asphalt repair. One thing we, we're pretty certain we're going to have to be in the street on Seraphin. When we get over St. Mary's, we're hoping we can get out of the street, get on the east side of St. Mary there is what we're hoping. Again, that needs, we need to investigate that further and determine if that is feasible. Seraphin is a pretty tight corridor, things on both sides of the street there, and there are also some, I believe there are some historic buildings along that stretch that we're going to have to deal with to make sure they're.
Seraphin's a nice street, it's one of our few good streets. We're going down the middle of Seraphin Street, or?
Good chance it'd be somewhere like that, yeah.
We might fix a file.
I know a guy who lives on Seraphin.
You know, I know a great guy that lives up there.
Is that where you live? You live up there, Tom?
Yeah. On, on that particular part of the project, we would definitely work with your guy's street department, figure out how you wanted to repair the trench, what you want to use for backfill, if you want to do some type of bridging over the, over the trench to help reduce settlement in the future, we would, given that you brought up it is one of your nicer streets and it sounds like it's important to you guys, we would, we could definitely take that into consideration and try to take some care of there with our backfill and make sure that we end up with a good product for you. This project is right at 4,800 millennial feet. Again, it's eight-inch, primarily replacing four-inch line. I think I've pretty much covered the historic buildings, that's. I think I've pretty much covered the historic buildings, that's something we just have to take into consideration in our design, make sure we're not doing anything that is gonna disturb those, make sure the city's comfortable with everything we're doing. Again, as far as cost goes on this one, one of the big items is the pavement repair, that's a lot of what's driving that up. The more we can get out of St. Mary's Road, the more it's gonna reduce the cost on that one. And Terry's told us, he thinks, he thinks we can get most of it out of the road, so that's gonna help lower cost on that project.
Where does St. Jude tie in that?
St. Jude comes across, 45's across this.
Is that gonna help St. Jude as far as, did we replace this line? Because I get complaints from St. Jude people that their water is shut off a lot of times because you're working on the lines.
Yes, a lot of times that St. Jude's water is shut off is because we are constantly fixing water leaks on St. Mary's Road. And so every time we fix a water leak on St. Mary's Road, it causes them to have water quality issues in St. Jude because of the way that water system's set up there, that it's not tied into other systems at a volume to displace the problem. So this...
This new line is gonna go up where St. Jude ties in?
It goes up to about where St. Jude ties in, yes. And we won't be, once this line is in place, we won't be constantly fixing water leaks from down here.
Shutting everything off, right.
And again, this number six project was our number one priority, and it's what started this thought process.
I'm not a board member, but I'm one of the listening audience. But I heard you say, was there anything you said about on the east side of St. Mary's Road?
I heard, east side of St. Mary's Road.
Yeah, on the east side of St. Mary's Road's possibility of laying some water line outside of the asphalt.
Where at?
Where the sewer line runs.
No, you can't.
Why?
It's private property.
Well, some of that's not.
Yes, it is, you know easement.
There has to be a utility easement.
No, I'm sorry. Let me explain. You go back and look it up. When I gave the easement for the interceptor sewer line, there would be nothing else put in that ditch and it was okay. We go out into the road, the Blacktop. Maybe if you want to come talk to us about it, we might work with you. But up until now, there's nothing in Hook and Ross, if you're familiar with it, to Marina Road, that's an old man's land.
I see Marina Road, what was the first?
All right, and you can't even get in Marina Road neither, because that's ours.
That's Hook and Ross.
So from, between those two areas, is there, you're talking about?
Jerry Ross and your Marina Road.
What is that?
Obviously, nothing's gonna be done without permission.
Sure, yeah.
Well, he tried to report, that's what I'm cautious.
Whenever the ownership and the easement, like, those conditions would prevail. He's just trying to figure out how to get from...
Well, I understand that, but I'm cautious here.
Sure, and I appreciate that because, you know, this is all preliminary, just to get the numbers in place so that everybody has an idea of what the project could be.
But you wouldn't have to tear up the street if you used the east side of that road, right?
If we could get it out of the road, we wouldn't have to tear up the road as well, that's correct.
Oh, you'd even have to tear up some road because it's still on our property. We go out in the road, Blacktop, the property line.
Well, we'd have to, we'd definitely have to look in there. Yeah. But for the conceptual project, you know...
I'm not here to start up anything, I'm just wanting questions.
Two quick questions, the fact that you're replacing it with eight-inch or bigger whatever for it, but you're still feeding everything probably with four inches kind of into, until you got all of it approved, you're not gonna end up really with any changes in water pressure?
You know, you will, some, just because you have friction loss in your lines, and a four-inch line that's six miles long, if you're using water out of the other end, is gonna have less pressure in it than if it was a four-inch line that had some eight-inch in it, reducing the friction loss. So you will, you won't increase it drastically, but you won't lose as much pressure over that timeframe, over that travel. Your C factor improves.
What about Winter Street? Why isn't it at the top of the list? I mean, you're up there like every other week.
Yeah, that's not a transit line. These are all transit lines.
Yeah, we picked the transit lines only for this, to be looked at. And then, when I spoke with Chris Boone, which would be his boss, we talked about looking at this project, we got it to a dollar amount that fit the rate structure. And if we went with a project like this, and it was approved, when we bid this out, if the project comes in less, which I've been assured that these prices should be elevated just a little bit for having these conversations, we bid this project out and we get a big bang for our buck, and we still want to spend this much money, then we can look at some of the other ones, because they can design it and throw them in there. But we chose six lines for replacement for asbestos lines only.
And that's all we have in the whole city?
Does that cover them all?
To our knowledge, yes.
Well, you know about them, don't you? Because that's your main one that breaks, right?
Yeah, that's why we chose these. Well, number six, yes, it's a limping well. It's, we don't need to put any more money in, well number six, you know, you've heard me speak.
But we had to replace that though, right?
At some point, yes. Yes, it's, we've talked about looking at a capital improvement project at some point for replacing the well. I mean, we're looking at, I mean, and that's something too, that if we wanted to have somebody look at that and we could get a better cost estimate, because right now, the only way we can get a cost estimate without having the engineers designer or something is call well people and say, hey, what do you think it's gonna cost?
But you say at some point in time, how far down the street is that on the calendar?
If money was... If money was not a, if money was, if money was a problem, was not a problem, we'd be wanting that well fixed yesterday.
So would that take precedence over this work to fit in the rating pre-schedule?
Give us a scenario if the well stops.
We're not using it now.
Oh, so, I mean...
We're not using it. I mean...
You would continue at the same?
Yes, yes. I mean, we don't have a, we don't have a well to, if we lose another well, which we have, we ran on two wells for a time period until we could get them, get the third one running, it causes us to run more hours at the water treatment facility to produce the same amount of water. Right now, we're in the summer and we run the water plant about 18 hours a day, you know, that only leaves...
That goes down, that goes down in the winter.
In the winter time, we'll get down to 12, you know, 13, 14 hours. And so, in the summer, we increase to four hours a day, every day. Weekends are slower, so we catch back up when we're a little behind. So if we got down to two wells, that would probably cause us to work this time of year an extra hour or so because of the restrictions in the lines. You don't lose, even though each well will put out 350 or 400 gallons, whatever it is, if you drop one well off, you don't lose 300 gallons, the others pick up... The others pick up more, so...
What kind of timeframe are we looking at? You started a well today, like, how long would it take to put in a well?
Ninety days.
Didn't have the operation?
Ninety days.
Well, that's not bad.
And you're probably looking at $150,000, $180,000 would be my guess for a new well set and the other one. You know, I'm cheating from the hip there a little bit, we've made a lot of phone calls and asked over the last couple of years. Because we would at some point have to abandon well number six and spend the money to close it out. That's leaving well six as an active well and not closing it out.
So recognizing those strengths, to utilize the revenue generated by the rate schedule that last year's were approved, and spend all that money on this one of these six projects, this one project with six phases or six different pieces. We do that, and we do need well number six replaced, we don't have that...
We do. We would have. The money's available.
Every part of what we're doing is funding capital reserves, funding capital approvals.
Help me observe a little bit.
Right now, a couple, a couple of years ago, when we started looking at the rates, like, almost four years ago now, the cash reserves were very, very low. And so knowing the distribution system was in bad shape, knowing that there's, that there's gonna need to be some repairs, the board took an aggressive approach to start looking at the rates and changing the rates and getting them in place. You're 2018, the way things are right now, we would have approximately a million dollars in reserve. Okay? What we, what this project will do, instead of having that money in reserves to do a project in 2018, we will have 600,000 or so in reserves and still do this project. Right now, according to the budget that you all have looked at, if you look at the bottom line on your budget on the water side, you'll see a cash amount that's there. And I, don't hold me to it because I don't know exactly what it is, but it's around, if you have it in front of you, it's around $400,000, okay? This project doesn't touch that. So if we lost wells, if we come to you tomorrow and said, there's been a big problem, we need $200,000, you would have.
Thank you. Any questions? Terry would, I was sure you're trying to get rid of the asbestos, but don't we have it over in the international edition?
Pardon me?
Don't we have it over in the international edition too?
No, no, those lines were replaced in, I don't know the year, but according to our maps...
See those lines in the road?
Okay.
Yeah, all those were replaced.
But wouldn't you, I mean, wouldn't you want to try to, again, and I don't know how long that is, if Weiner, if Weiner Hill is two blocks long, I don't know, but, I mean, the problem, children, wouldn't you want to put it on air?
You know, yes, we would. And I, and again, when this project's bid, if it comes in under, that's a pretty insignificant cost on that. You actually, if you look at the budget that's been submitted that we're going through, there's, that still leaves money in the budget for those kind of things. That Weiner Hill Road is a one-inch plastic line, isn't that right?
Yes.
It's a one-inch plastic line, it's an oddball-sized line, and rocks are putting holes in it. So that's not like we'd be replacing a four-inch water main or something, it's got a one-inch plastic line that goes up and feeds a couple of houses.
But you could, to do it right, you would put a four, you would put a bigger main in there, wouldn't you?
It's really not a main, you know, it's really a service line that's on our right way that we have to fix.
A question for the board to consider in the next 15 minutes.
Yes.
It's whether or not to ship yours. And instead of funding individual projects or two every year, to go ahead and do six projects in one year and finance that to our existing approved bonding ability. And then use the capital from year to year that would have been dedicated to projects to pay down the bonds. So the net result is no more money being spent, projects getting done earlier under a single design with a sole source responsibility, and the cost savings that comes from taking advantage of low interest rates and today's construction material prices.
With a large volume.
You mentioned, Terry, that you felt like some of the local contractors that bid on this as individual projects may not have the ability to bid on this as one large project.
Well, the reason I said that is, is some, and not, not the large construction companies?
They're a million bucks.
Oh, yeah, million dollar, I mean, most decent-sized contractors can do a million-dollar bonding job. But the guy that owns a backhoe and a dump truck that can only bond $80,000 job, you know, he might come to you guys and say, hey, if you'd let me do this. Well, he could always be a sub to the general, but he's not... Oh, sure, sure, the larger, sure, I'm talking about, you might get hit with the guy that...
Backhoe bob.
Backhoe bob, yes. And the reason I told you that is it always comes up, and we have a fiduciary responsibility into the city to get the best bang for the buck. And I think a project...
We're just talking here, there's at least four local contractors, large, have a bonding capacity.
Sure, sure, I'm talking about the little... Yeah, in St. Genevieve area, we've got some major contractors.
Yeah, I know, honestly, it's an issue either, but when we say things like that, and then for the next month, I have people saying, hey, why are you doing this job that local contractors like so-and-so can't bid? And I have to explain to them, well, so-and-so can bid, and so I just wanted to get that out.
Yes, most reputable contractors can bid this job. And so, as Martin said, to improve the project, to improve the distribution system, we were going to look over the next years of doing it, hiring an engineering company, designing a small job, bidding it out, getting it done. The next year, hiring an engineering company, design a small job, bidding it out, getting it done. If we do it like this, we hire one engineering company upfront, designs the project, we bid it out, we get the best value we can, the difference is, is that you've got the bonds that's already been voted in that hadn't been used, we can use that money, or interest rates are low, we're gonna capitalize on the construction costs that we know now, not the inflated cost down the road, which would offset the interest, and so we get a project done now. That's the purpose.
There's some, they were telling me about, so if you do it this way, the permitting is quicker, easier, and cheaper.
Much, yeah, we would get a set of design plans submitted to DNR, get construction approval and done, and then we got it done. If we do it each year, then we've got extra engineering costs, extra process, and just wasting some money. So I think it's a good idea, I've talked with Dick Tuttle, Director of our Operations, we've met with the engineers several times, we've met with Martin, the money's available if you want to do this. If you don't like this, you know, we don't have to do it, I just think it's a good idea.
What's this come up to total?
Some of 1,900.
I've got two numbers. One, one number is, the first number I'll give you is the total of all these construction subtotals, which excludes the contingencies, engineering, and inspection. That number is 820,000. If you include the other items, which would be a total of all these bottom numbers, you get to just over a million dollars.
So we eliminate the engineering costs, we can bring it in other places?
We'd rather eliminate the contingency.
So really, right now, your number one project, St. Mary's Road, is a third of what we're looking at.
And that's what sparked all this, was when that came in so high.
Do the, that's a good idea, get rid of...
Right, and get these problems fixed.
And in the budget, also, in the budget that you guys have been looking at, the money that was carried over, that we would have spent on St. Mary's Road this year, that we didn't spend, will be then carried over to the next year's budget, which will cover all the engineering costs and stuff. So the number that you're gonna be looking at is gonna be closer to the $800,000 of borrowed money.
What kind of timeframe do you think this would be?
Yeah, the whole summer.
Yeah, I think the construction contract would be 180 days, probably, close to six months. I mean, if things got rolling now, there's no reason this project couldn't take place next year, I don't know if that's how it's budgeted or how that's worked, but that's, that would be the kind of turnaround time we would be looking at.
There's more than enough money in the proposed budget to pay for all the designs.
I'm just looking at, you know, we got 170, in infrastructure improvements for next year, we got 175,000 budgeted. I mean, if that, if you manage to do that at 200,000, that's five years, pretty much five years to pay it, pay it all, based on this.
Yes, and we could talk about the terms of the payoff if you want, when you, if you want to do the project, we can talk about terms of that in a quick session at some point, because if you look at the budget, your projected income, your projected reserves are continuing to grow, even paying this project off. even paying this project off at the lowest payment level that we looked at, which was going to be about $80,000 a year payment on this. If we want to double those payments, we can cut that in half. Your reserve account will just quit not grow as fast. I would not recommend to do a project to the point that the reserve account does not grow, because we still have a lot of other issues in the system. But this is, I really strongly believe this is a good project, and I believe that when we bid this project, the cost will come in under these estimated costs.
I would...
I don't know that to be sure.
What would concern me would be a relatively quick payoff, that we wouldn't be tying up any other improvements that might come along that we couldn't do. And I can understand the reserve part, but we would have that to be able to do it.
And there's other options, too. I mean, if we had a project that came in, I mean, interest rates are so low right now that maybe you don't want to use, and again, we'll have to look at the financing on this, maybe you don't want to use your bonding capacity, maybe you want to go to the bank and borrow the money. Interest rates are low. Then you've got that money, you've still got $2 million sitting there that you could use if you had to.
We don't get to decide to borrow money. The voters have to approve it. So you have to operate either with a certificate of participation or with a bonding capacity. Bonding capacity doesn't mean we have to sell bonds. It just means we can borrow money.
Right.
And so I think part of what we talk about is maybe, as the mayor's concerned, you can't go to the bond market with a five-year note.
Right.
I mean, there's just no...
There's no one, yeah.
But you could find a private financier, like a bank, a local bank, who would take a five-year note.
Right.
And you'd be using your debt authority to enter into that note with a bank. And of course, it would be at market rates.
And I believe, and I believe Sue told me, there's still $2 million in that money, that approval already still there. So you'd only be using half of that approval if an emergency came up while you were still paying this off.
Yep. So our decision needs to be made in about three minutes?
Well, I think now we get in the... If you like this direction, we need to refine it.
Right.
And come back to you with kind of an ultimate yes-or-no decision. But we just need to know this is the direction you think we should move before we start spending more time and effort, just calling banks and...
Yeah, good presentation, and I think this is great.
What I would...
This is really going to help us.
What do you want to know? What I would recommend is that if we're going to move forward on this, that we would vote, you guys would vote to approve this and enter into an agreement with Concorde right after the budgets were approved, because this is stuff that would be paid for out of next budget year. I wouldn't want to vote to approve this until the budget was approved. So next month or whenever that is would be when I would recommend having this on to the council for a vote.
We'll time this research on everything, the value, it sounds like a...
And remember, these plans are, you know, Google Earth, lines were drawn just to give visuals. These are estimated footages, all this stuff, because they're not getting paid to do this right now.
We got paid to do it.
Pro bono.
You know, they plant those seeds.
Yeah.
If anybody next, tonight, a two-minute break, try to be back here in two minutes.
Do you want all this back?
[inaudible]
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 Okay, to the revised agenda, if I have the revised agenda?
Yes.
[inaudible]
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 All in favor?
Aye.
The votes?
Aye.
If we have any...
We do have a, we'd like to recognize our Boy Scout in the crowd. Would you like to stand up and tell us who you are?
I'm Sam Fisher from Troop 150.
And you're here for, I guess, a merit badge?
Yeah, a merit badge.
Great, good to have you.
Thanks, thanks for letting me come.
What's the name of your merit badge?
Citizenship in the community.
Okay, excellent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Martin will go over and report.
Okay. On Porter Street, the utility relocations, since I wrote this, have been completed. Citizens Electric has moved the poles and the three national gas has lowered the lines. So the contractor now can proceed. The drain pipe between apartments comes up to the apartment lot next to our house. The piping has been put in, they were finishing up the structures, the boxes. So I think we can look forward to seeing that project progress in a normal manner now. Again, since I wrote this, I received an email from the Union Pacific Representative, who said that he'll be back in town next week. He's been on vacation. So hopefully, we will get together with them and make progress on clearing out the drainage culverts on North Main, Little Rock Road, so that we don't have flooding problems here when we get an inch rain or so. We had an investigator come down, who's not the adjuster, who looked at the truck. Dave met with him, and I talked to him, and he was asking a lot of questions about kind of the history of the truck and maintenance records and doing what an investigator does. But I can't imagine he found anything other than what we know. We're continuing to meet with insurance companies. And I think, you know, we've had a couple of meetings, work sessions, and I may have told you this already, but we decided to re-enroll, get all the employees to fill out new forms on the health insurance and to resubmit, because the renewal option was just too painful. So that we're now submitting to a range of insurance companies, not just Anthem. And we'll see where that puts us. In addition to dealing with Leighton, we talked to Woke Insurance to make sure, you know, we're getting a good range of options. And we're going to continue to look at that. I think the expectation is, it's not going to be cheaper than it was, but we're going to have what, I hope it comes in within our projected increase for health insurance, as well as the liability and comprehensive insurance. The Midwest Risk Pool is, and again, I know I've said this, is the company that is writing our workman's comp and wants to, we will be submitting pricing on the other lines of our insurance, and I think prospects are pretty good. I went to Claire McCaskill's kitchen and table talk to encourage the Congresswoman, it was a staffer, to support the, watch the National Park Service reports and to kind of encourage her to be ready to stand with us in support of National Park Designation. And everybody there kind of clapped their hands, said, "That's a good idea." So the other people from the community who were there were supportive of that. I can't say the rest of the conversation that took place at that meeting was as cordial. Lots of people were not happy with the federal government and/or each other. Sandra and Eric and I attended the Mississippi Lime Community Advisory Panel Meeting this I don't know that there's a whole lot to report out about, not much really happened, except the company expressed their desire to be more proactive in nurturing their relationship with the citizens and the institutions in the city. They kind of gave an overview of what this panel would be. My question was, you know, "Why are you doing this now? We've been in this community for a lot of years." And the perception I got was that they felt that the company has kind of grown aloof from the citizenry, and I think the fly ash communication issue, they basically said, "We'd do a very good job with that." And I told them I agree, there was no communication. So all of a sudden, this facility was being built, and the fly ash was being dumped in the ground, and everybody had to find about it after the fact. So they're talking about communication channels and newsletters and ways, you know, to reconnect with the city. And we all encouraged them to do that, and hopefully something will come of that. Any questions?
We have received some bids, quotes on repairs to the building. Again, I know I told some of the board members this, and we're still waiting for some. You know, I'm not going to wait a long time, because we need to get to work on it. Leighton assures me, and that's kind of in this report, that the $62,166.73 we received, even though the letter suggests that this is their settlement with us, is not to file the payment. That Leighton has called the caseworker on it, she goes, "Just to get money in the city's hands so they can begin the process of making repairs that we have, placement value insurance, and they're going to make us whole to, under that insurance." Yeah, I'm not a trusting soul when it comes to insurance companies, so I'm not going to rely on that. I am going to make sure that what we spend is at least determined in a competitive manner so that we can defend it to the insurance companies if times comes, and that the item that they thought was going to cost, you know, $6,000 is, I have quotes at $15,000, and the real price is $15,000. And I want to be able to support those decisions as we make them. Any else? Thank you.
Okay. The number of staff reports, Sandra, you're top of the list.
Well, we're safely on the other side of Jour de Fête and in the middle of budget discussions for next year. There are a few things I'd like to recap. We, I'm continuing to make adjustments in our branding and guest relations approach and our outreach. A little recap of the Jour de Fête, we had our highest Saturday numbers ever through the Welcome Center. Of course, the Welcome Center is only the tip of the iceberg for the total crowds in the street, but we exceeded our previous Saturday numbers as of 2:30 on Saturday afternoon for a total of 667 visitors on Saturday and 375 on Sunday, also a large day for a Sunday at the Welcome Center. We did have some different things going on. We had several community volunteers who responded to my request for volunteers. They dressed in period costume. I had a mother and a daughter and a couple of other individuals who walked around and greeted visitors, had their pictures taken with them, pointed out attractions and areas of interest or shops, and also passed out our fans that we had, which was a social media promotion that I'll tell you about. And so we also showed the flood news footage. Bob Mueller had some footage that had been collected over the years in VHS format, and his friend, or his brother, excuse me, converted that over to digital for us. And so we showed that footage in the Welcome Center over the weekend. It was very interesting to people. They seemed to really enjoy it, and to, it was very captivating to them. Not everyone who came during the day on Saturday and Sunday obviously could come to the events at the Performing Arts Center on Sunday night, so. And that had a very nice attendance, about, probably about 450 people is what we're guessing attended that performance on Sunday night about the review of the flood. And so we changed opening ceremonies this year. We had more of a crowd. I was trying to count people in the crowd, and I stopped when I got to about 350, and I know that was a pretty good turnout for an opening ceremony at Jour de Fête. And I think it worked well, because we kind of moved it around to where we were facing both Main Street and Market Street. And so people walking up and down the street, we're able to see what was going on and hear the presentations. I think it worked out pretty well. As I said, we did a social media promo. We got a lot of new visits and likes on our Facebook page. We gave away some fans that had our Visit St. Jen Facebook address on it, so people were checking in, that they were at the St. Jen Jour de Fête. And so anytime you can create that kind of buzz, that's a good thing. I just wanted to point out that one of the things I'm doing, in addition to having kind of a redo of our advertising, and I'll circulate this, this is Feast Magazine in St. Louis, which is a pretty direct correlation with our target market for drawing guests from the St. Louis metro region. This is now a subsidiary of St. Louis Post-Dispatch, but it's a very niche targeted publication. And so we have a whole page of St. Genevieve ads. Ours is the banner across the top with the bullet points, dining, lodging, art, shopping, wineries, historic home tours, and bed and breakfast ends. This kind of bulleted information is what we're moving to with our ads, so that you can see it just at a glance. And then I'm also writing more articles to send in to accompany that, and we've gotten a pretty good response. I'm just going to circulate a couple of things. One of these is an example of an article that I just did called "St. Genevieve, An Hour Away But A World Apart." And I sent this to markets in Southern Illinois, the South County Times, the Webster Groves and Kirkwood Times newspapers in St. Louis. So I'll just circulate that around. There are a few of them down at Visitor Center. There are copies of this available there. In terms of our recent visitor statistics, our June visits were up by about 15%. And I have the numbers here if anyone wants to see those charts and so on. We were up by about 15% in June, and July was up 65%. And so because we were slow earlier in the year, we're just at about 2% above last year, but we're gaining steam, and hopefully that will continue to increase. Our tourism downtown taxes, I'll distribute this. We kind of look at several downtown restaurants and downtown shops and try to capture the activity there. Our shops were down on the year, but our restaurants are up by about the same amount. So I'll distribute this information for those like numbers of charts. If there's anyone else in the gallery that would like a copy of these numbers, welcome to them.
Give me one, miss.
Sure.
Thank you.
There you go. So upcoming events and programs, of course, tomorrow night is the Fourth Friday Art Walk in St. Genevieve, so we hope that everyone here and everyone listening at home will please come and patronize our downtown shops and art galleries. They stay open late on the Fourth Friday of the month. They have to bring in extra staff to do that, and they usually have some nice refreshments. So you can walk around, have a good time, see people you know, and maybe buy some art. So that's tomorrow night, and it goes from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We're also gearing up for Rural Heritage Days in October. This Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., is the Bolduc's La Musique Festival, all different kinds of musical entertainment all day long, and some really interesting living history interpretation going on. And then we have the Foundation for Restoration. They have their Fall History Conference in the middle of September. So I've been meeting with these groups to kind of try to advise them on maybe some advertising that they can take advantage of and maybe build on some of our programs and leverage some of those dollars. And I, we were able to get our brochures taken over to the World Shooting Complex. You know, if you're a Marx person, you know that they have the Grand American, I think it is, shooting exhibition, or shooting con... it is, shooting exhibition or shooting contest in the middle of August falls right after Jurdafet or just around that time. And so we sent a lot of St. Genevieve brochures over there to try to lure people this way. I'm to understand that back in the day when they first started that, we had a lot more traffic over here for Jurdafet because supposedly, not to stereotype, but the husbands would be shooting and the wives would come over shopping. Well, they got smart and they started their own craft festival over there so people don't come quite as far away. But we made sure that they had some St. Genevieve brochures either way. And then just operationally, we are continuing our repairs and improvements on the building and trying to get all of our lighting systems fully functional. So that remains an ongoing challenge and I hope to have quite a bit of that taken care of at least by the end of September. And I thank everyone for who's been helping with that. In particular, if you run into Don Rapp on the streets or Chip Marzuko on the streets, they've been very helpful and very generous with their time in trying to resolve some of the issues that we're facing down there. Any questions?
Is Bill Nigga going to show that flood video anymore?
Oh, I don't know that he has specific plans set to do that, but I can tell you that he is taking orders for the DVD. He's going to order, you know, a certain number, 100 or 200 or however many he gets pre-orders for. So if you wanted to call him, you could get your very own copy. And the posters, thank you for reminding me of that. Of course, the River Gage Park program that we had on Sunday afternoon of Jurdafet, we had about 65 people there. I think it was really nicely attended. I think the people that were there were very pleased with it. We got a few donations for the park already and those donations are continuing to come in. I think Jan Bronze reported at our Tourism Advisory Council meeting the other day that we've gotten about $2,000 so far in donations, which is really great.
What's the goal?
Well, we don't know what the goal is yet because they're, yeah, as much as we can fundraise probably. But the goal will be based on the final specs for the park and the public art and the displays and the sidewalks. So right now people are giving because they think that the park is a good idea. And so we're up to 2,000 already. And so no city funds will be expended, as far as we know, to produce the thing that will be River Gage Park. The posters right now are on sale here at City Hall. They're on sale at the Chamber of Commerce office. They're on sale at the Welcome Center and also at Art and Antiques on Main Street. And if you have a shop or a business and you would like to support this effort and offer these posters for sale, they're $10 apiece and the proceeds go to help support the park. So please call down to the Welcome Center at 883-709-7 and I'd be glad to give you a supply of posters to help us out.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Dave here, Dave. Dave hiding back there?
You know, my report's a little sharp, but you could pretty well just multiply that about four or five times. So, I mean, I didn't want to stay too much time in the office. It got a little smell to it, so I tried to type quick. This time of year, it's pretty routine every month. Mow, sweep, mow, sweep, weed eat, patch, and everything else comes in between. Tree limbs for the bus line.
Well, that's for everyone.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So we are moving ahead with the purchase of the boxes for the chemicals.
Yes.
Of our section today.
Yeah. Actually, I have enough money in my safety account to get one. And then I'm going to ask you to let me use some of the chemical money that we have left to get a couple more.
What are you going to do with those boxes when you switch over to?
I'll always have some money.
Yeah, that would be a good way from some of those things.
Yeah, that's. And I've got aerosol cans in there for 20 years, so I mean, we're still trying to get rid of them. I didn't buy them. I inherited.
Anything else for Dave?
So it's taken you 13 years to?
Yeah, pretty well.
Oh, I was just curious. I didn't get in the building. I saw him outside helping. Did a lot of the aerosol cans?
No.
I didn't think they did. I looked in there. I thought they were intact, but this is just the same way to store them.
Yeah, just in case they were up there with something going.
It's all flammable. It's not.
Yeah.
Anything that's flammable has to be.
Right.
Flammable stuff.
Yeah, we got all our gas and stuff in LRA, but we just need more.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Steve.
If you don't mind, I'll make this happen after Dave. It's personal stuff that I've typed out later on. Do a check.
Thank you. You're welcome. You too.
You have a copy of the Fauci's report? I'll have to come up with people to serve on the committee that John suggested. I'll do that under other business, but there's nothing on that. We'll go to Eric.
Chief Swin's still looking for three more fire hydrants.
Still looking for three fire hydrants, yeah.
So we have this new disorder conduct ordinance. Did we have to use it?
We did during Jurdafet. I think we only, we only ended up charging one. We're waiting to have an official ordinance number once the recodification is done, but it's entered into our reporting system and the officers have been instructed on the proper use of enforcing that. We want to make sure and use that appropriately. You know, we don't want to, there was a certain aspect of that as far as vulgar language towards police officers. You know, obviously, we don't want that to be, to be misused. A lot of vulgar language is used sometimes, but everybody's familiar and I think that it'll be definitely an asset to the departments.
Nothing? Nothing? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board. The notice in the report, I mentioned the screen that we installed in lift station two again. And as of right now, we have a, we're gathering a large, large quantity of material from this line that we installed it in. We have, we did have one, one pump that plugged up last week. That could have been a rag that was still in the, in the lift station itself, but we were pulling it a few times a week before we installed the screen.
Can we get, is there any way that we can get reimbursed for the cost of the manpower and everything? Once we take the evidence and confront the people that are doing that or is there anything to do? Or just collect this stuff?
You know, one of the things that we could do if it became a problem was to send the city ordinance. There's some rules on what you can discharge. If we did a study and determined exactly what was being discharged and from exactly where it was being discharged, if that exceeded the city ordinance limits, then there could be some penalties put on that. But as far as the city recouping the wages and cost of that, we're not, you're not getting charged any extra for doing that, even if it was a call out in the middle of the night because we don't charge the city any extra for overtime. I mean, that's just something we have to do. So that would be really hard, but penalties could be implied if they were discharging something into the sanitary sewer that's not allowed for the ordinance. So yes, you could get some penalties recouped, but not for the wages.
I'm not sure I want to handle it publicly, but I'm going to. In a similar situation, I installed a screen in a manhole to collect foreign matter that was getting in and messing up a lift station pump. And it was clear where it was coming from. We took whatever we collected because there's only one possible place it could have come from and asked that the organization that was depositing it dispose of it. And the thing that really made that successful was that some of the material we were getting out had their name on it, laundry mark. So we might want to talk about how we're going to deal with this. Yeah, if there's a, if you can pinpoint it down.
Yes, there's, we could do that. But I'm not sure right now the screen is set from just one customer or not, is it?
It is.
It'd be easily done.
There you go. Anything else for Steve? Steve, you got anything? Great. Thank you, Steve. Okay, any committee reports? Okay. Approval of the minutes from August the 8th?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, thank you. The financial report for July. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. At this time, it's 7:30. We'll open a public hearing. This hearing, citizens may comment on the property tax rates proposed to be set by the City of St. Genevieve with a subdivision. Tax rates shall be set to produce revenues which the budget for fiscal year 2014 shows to be required from the property tax. And you have a copy of that in your packet. This was last year. Same as last year.
But it's not last year.
No, it's not last year. It went up 1,000. Went up 1,000 of a cent.
It goes up when assessed values go down, the rate goes up. So it's not a good thing.
So there's no other comments? We'll close the hearing at 7:31.
What's the current general revenue tax rate? Do you have that?
.7184. Okay, well, that's what they.
Oh, I'm sorry. .784?
This.
Okay, this is, this is, but what is, so it's, is the current one, it's like .715? It's just like very close.
We don't, you know, we don't have any control over this. It's just under the Hancock Amendment, they make the adjustments based on assessed valuation and it just, whatever it is, it nets out the city the same revenues. And the reason they adopted that was to keep cities from being enriched by rising property bills.
Okay, so we'll go on to, at this time, we would like to introduce Resolution 201331, the resolution authorizing the mayor to officially dedicate the song "Dear Old St. Genevieve" by William Bill Simon as the official song of the City of St. Genevieve. We have that, I don't know if you want me to read the whole, we have the song. I think it'd probably be a good time to play it.
It lasts less than three minutes, so. And the beginning of it is actually, the intro is very long before you actually hear the words. And this is the 1995 version. St. Genevieve County Municipal, St. Genevieve City Municipal Band played it in 1995 and Ralph Tommier is going to be singing it. So.
Dear old St. Genevieve, we love you, St. Genevieve. We're proud of your history and hospitality. Your future, may it be of peace and tranquility.
Hey, we could have Dave if you could have walked.
I will present this to the, to the Son family, I guess, between the Valley and St. Jen football game when they recognize him, I guess, induct him into the St. Jen Hall of Fame. So we'll have a copy of this resolution and present it to the family there.
Assume.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you very much. Resolution 201332, resolution reappointing Joan Dunsey to the St. Genevieve Board of Adjustments. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Old business, new business, bill number 3936, first reading.
And ordinance levy and taxes for the year 2013.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Because we usually get this, at this time, we always end up having to do two readings, so. All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, second reading, bill number 3936.
And ordinance levy and taxes for the year 2013.
With approval.
Second. Roll call.
Alderman Cowsh?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwick?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ruffield? Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 3936 now becomes ordinance 3877.
Thank you. Bill number 3937, first reading.
And ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quit claim deed from the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation, including the granting of easements provided therein. With your group.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, bill number 3938, first reading.
And ordinance author- In ordinance authorizing the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to accept a quick claim deed from the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 3939, first reading?
In ordinance to create the inmate security fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, any public comments, anyone? Yes, sir, please.
I'd like to say something, please.
Sure.
I want to thank for your time, especially that, and I want to thank the City of St. Genevieve, and especially the County of St. Genevieve, for being as good as they have been to my family, as far as economics and everything else. They have been real good.
Give us your name and that.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Bob Fisher, and that's my son Sam, and I want to explain to him what it means to be a citizen, because it's probably the most important thing you can ever be in your life. There's two kinds, it's just like two mules that pull a plow, one's doing the work and the other one's just tugging along, pretending he's doing the work. So Sam, you want to be the mule that does the work, because it's the most important thing you could do. And I'll say this, and I'll let everybody be. The strongest thing we have in the whole country is this thing right here. As cheap as it is, it's the strongest thing we got. Anybody can voice their opinion. No matter what they think, and no matter how they feel, we still have that right. I don't want anybody to take that away from you. And the second thing is to be able to get involved, like these people are right here, no matter how small, no matter how stupid, no matter what you look like or how you feel, you can run for offices, and you can vote, and get involved, and you can, even if you're not the main guru, you can still keep everybody honest, and that's what it's all about. So thank you, and be a good citizen.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
Thank you for letting me come tonight and visit you in this meeting, and it was a great time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other business, we have an approval of a temporary liquor license for the Knights of Columbus for a project graduation fundraiser on September the 28th at the Knights of Columbus Grounds, 600 East Market Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And as I mentioned earlier, under other business, I did, with the help of a couple people, come up, and suggestions of names, actually had more names to pick from, and I ended up picking, but I wanted to try to keep the group to seven or eight people, just as far as being able to get everybody together for a meeting. So, the people that I've come up with to try to help us out on our decisions of the direction with our fire department, I guess more or less our apparatus or our equipment in the direction, and some ideas of what to do with it and how to go. Gene Dry, Randy Rezekia, Neil Weiner, Jimbo Wyler, and from the fire department, Tim Heller, and Kenny Steiger, and I've got two board members on there, Teddy Ross and John Stupi. So we will, we'll get with Pam next week and start seeing what's convenient for everybody, that we can at least have the first meeting and start some discussions on. So if anybody, does anybody have anything else? adjourned, don't forget we continue the work session after this, so, we have a motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's mad, isn't it?
As I brought up last night, was the idea of looking at personnel changes in the police department, there's maybe, and kind of cutbacks, the possibility of that, and it was suggested that, to hear from Eric, as far as that part goes, so, without getting into, without getting into actual scheduling, and how many people are where at one time, and those kinds of things, I'd kind of like him to give, talk to him today, Martin and I did, and I'd like to get him to give the side of his story to you all that he talked to me about, so.
I was not able to attend the meeting last night, in fact, I didn't know about me last night, but I had caught some of the gist of what was discussed last night. From what I've gathered, I think that there are some of the, it's been a topic every year that I've come up for budget, the number of officers that we have, and the feeling that the town hasn't grown in X number of years, but the police officers have. For one thing, it hasn't grown in the 13 or 14 years that I've been associated with the department, but compared to the number in the 70s or 80s, which was before my time, there was fewer officers here, apparently. So, I guess, talking specifically, you know, if there was a situation, and my preference is that there's a situation that I'll have three officers on at one time, which would be two patrol officers and a sergeant. And that was somewhat called a question as far as, as far as being overkill. And just looking at the situations, you know, that we deal with and encounter pretty regularly, you know, I had used the adage in the past, you know, two is born, one is none, adage, in that a single officer responding to a serious incident is essentially no officer responding to an incident. And by that, I mean, any domestic situation that we run to is almost certain to involve at least two primary physical aggressors. So a one officer response to that is outnumbered, which is not ever going to be safe or advised. A two officer response to that is still potentially threatening for the officer. That's assuming that every domestic is a husband and wife, or a father and son. You know, there are numbers of statistics to show that as soon as officers engage the primary physical aggressor, even if the victim, as it were, is the calling and reporting party, she then is aggressive against the officer when he goes to take some enforcement action against the aggressor. So you run into there, a two-on-two situation, which is a lot better than a two-on-one situation. But even in that, that's still not, I mean, if anybody has ever been involved in altercation, you know that when somebody is mad and upset, if somebody doesn't want to be removed, it takes force to remove them. And we prefer to operate in the strength by numbers, or strength in numbers philosophy there. Now, with that being said, I, I'm not proposing that we have 10 officers all 24 hours a day and seven days a week. With the exception of administration during the day, a three officer shift, I think is definitely appropriate. And the reason I say that, like I said, if there's one domestic going on that we know is a two-person response, that's assuming every other call holds and there's nothing else that happens while those two officers are working that one incident, and that's not going to happen very often. You know, there's always going to be some call impending, and it may be, it may be a dog barking call, but it may be another domestic. And then that would, even in that, that would leave my third officer responding to a domestic by himself, and hoping that a county deputy is not a half hour away to come and assist. So, you know, just, this year, just since January, we've responded to 120 domestics or disturbance calls, which is, I would say, fairly significant for the reputation that the city has as far as being peaceful and nothing ever happens here. We've had two incidents, instances that I can think of within the last year, where we've had an actively fighting subject trying to get the officers gun, which of course is our, you know, most troubling scenario. You know, fortunately, on one of those, it was a two-on-one situation, we had two aggressors against our officer, and backup was close by because we had another officer on duty. And they were able to handle the situation, nobody was, you know, nobody had to use that force or anything like that, the situation was handled very well. But there have been a number of instances, we had one, just a couple of years ago, luckily we had a three-person response, we had, it was a domestic, we had an officer responding. When he got there, he contacted the reporting party, who was screaming that the aggressor was heading into the gun cabinet, which was in a closet, so when they go in there, sure enough, he's trying to get into his gun cabinet, you know, if I was on there, and he was, he was a bigger guy than me. So, there are more instances than I care to name singly, but definitely require a two-officer response. So I guess, just my, from my standpoint, my professional opinion, the number of officers that we have budgeted is certainly appropriate. Again, I hope that in my, in my time with the city, I've shown my ability to be reasonable. When we had 11 officers and we were in a budget situation five years ago, I relinquished that position. I don't think that it's reasonable to relinquish another position at this time, or in the future, unless there's some drastic change. You guys have any questions specifically?
Chief, do you have two officers on duty 24 hours a day? Oh, can I ask that?
You can, theoretically, I would love to have at least two officers on.
Well, I was thinking about scheduling, and, you know, like, I'm sure some of these acts are more likely to happen late at night.
Well, we were talking about that today, and I'm in the process of...
You need two during the day.
Well, where we get into, and I mentioned this during my earlier budget meetings, I, right now, everything is so up in the air, I've been working midnight, Jason's worked 18, 12s in a row, evening shifts, day shifts, night shifts, just trying to give coverage. Where I think that that's detrimental to the city is, if you take a manager from a managerial role, then you have another patrol officer, and the roles and the duties of that manager are now wasted on doing a patrol officer's work. You know, we do have two administrators on the road, typically during the day, but that is the time that we're handling the calls that came in the night before that require additional investigations, handling the administrative part of it, the report approval, and the reporting to the fed, federal agencies, UCR and whatnot. So, I guess, to answer your question, or answer where your question specifically was, the, do we need two officers during the day? We are in the process of getting a little better high-charge order graph that will show the frequency of certain calls, but just from our experience, typically, a weekend night is going to be, there's going to be more of a possibility of something happening. That's not to say a Tuesday night isn't going to, isn't going to have a homicide in progress. So, I, we've looked at schedules, and ever since I've been here, we've looked at, you know, really trying to keep overtime down and scheduling appropriately to where we have sufficient coverage. The last thing that I want to do is go make a death notification go on my officers' families, because I have one person on. And there's been times recently, and right now is not as critical, but within the last month, that I worked a seven-to-seven shift during the day by myself, and I had a seven-to-seven officer come out and work all night by himself, and that's not ideal. Certainly, we limit that wherever it's possible, with illness and vacations and scheduling conflicts, it's just the way it is. And, you know, right now, we're operating with 20% reduction in staff already, and it's been a hardship, and I think it's reflected in our productivity, I think it's reflected in the efficiency of our department as far as, as far as clearing cases that involve investigation. I think that it's affecting, not that my desk is ever terribly clean, but just the efficiency in the office and the administrative duties that have to go on, because we're all wearing everybody's hats right now. You know, and some of that is certainly just beyond our control with the circumstances that are going on with certain officers. But I, I think that it would, I think that it would set us back several years to see a reduction in staff, to see a reduction in officers. You know, again, it's all based on the philosophy of this board, and what you want for your city, and what you want from your departments. But I know my department, and every department that I've come in contact with in the city, I mean, I think everybody strives to provide the best service to the citizens, to the city, and we certainly try our best to satisfy the concerns of our callers when we respond to a call for service. They don't want somebody to come in and take a report and leave, knowing that nothing's going to be done. And again, I have literally recovered stolen equipment, serious equipment, ATVs and whatnot, that were never reported stolen, because the adage was, well, they're not going to find it anyway, so there's not even any point in reporting stolen. So, that reputation was there, I think that we, I think that we've leaned some bounds from where we were, and I think that that reputation is finally starting to dissipate. People realize that we do care, and that we do want to do a good job, but that is completely contingent on the staff that we have. You know, if we get an unproductive officer in there, it's going to affect the way that we're going to do it. And so that's, I mean, all of that factors in, if we're spending absorbent amount of time managing somebody, and not enough time managing the department, then, you know, those are things that we need to take care of. But if you don't have that person to manage, and you were doing his job, then you are not getting the management that you're paying for.
Chief, I understand fully that I'm not qualified to do your job, and I have great confidence in you, performance you've shown as a chief. And I can't be cognizant, if you say you need ten officers, say, no, I only think you need nine. I'm not qualified to make that determination. Recognizing that we're searching the budget, we're trying to find some money for street projects that everybody wants, I think to reduce headcount in a public safety department is the last place to look to reduce headcount. If we have to lose city employees, I just don't think that that's where you start looking to reduce headcount. I think that we had, you know, general questions as board, and I know that some of us had more questions, but that's really all I want to say about it. I mean, I'm just, it's hard to measure success. It's easy to measure better. It's easy to measure better. And I think that we, the more we tighten the budget of public safety, the more opportunities to measure better we might have.
I would never want one of our city employees to ever feel that they are out there alone and putting their lives on the line for the citizens and to feel like they don't have any backup. That's not safe. Brave.
Well, and I, along those lines, this is a horrible analogy that I'm going to use anyways. I had almost brother-in-law one time that came out and was, I wasn't a big fan of the guy, and he said, you know, I'm a genius. And I said, oh, really? And I thought to myself, if you have to tell somebody you're a genius, you're probably not a genius. So along those lines, I, I could stand here and say that I, that I try to be reasonable and I try to be a good steward of the, of the budget, but I think that, that you do that by showing. And, and again, we had 11 officers and we saw that we could operate with fewer officers. We did relinquish that position. It was, it was before the board, it was a decision that, that we made and, and I thought that it was reasonable and feasible to do that at the time, but I think anything beyond that is, is going to be not reasonable.
The only thing I got to ask is, you got a circle here to sit. You got two officers on or three? What does the county do when they got an officer in Bloomsdale and they got a domestic on their High Park and the other one's down zero in St. Mary?
They're going a hundred miles an hour to get there.
Well, but does the one waiting for the other one to go in or does he go in? I mean-
There are times that, that we will have to go in by ourselves and I'm, but we are- it's, it's a different animal. I mean, their circle is a lot bigger than our circle, but their, their staff is a lot bigger than our staff. So they don't have two or three officers on at one time. They may have five officers on. They may have, I don't know is what I'm trying to say. I don't know how many they staff. They staff considerably more than we do because their circle is, is bigger than ours. There are certainly times that I've gone in on domestics by myself, even, even with backup in town. You know, if it's a life-saving situation, that's what you pay us for. But we also have an obligation to, to work smart and, and work safely. And if the situation will allow us to wait for, for the appropriate response, we, we do that. You know, we, I've heard them at times rally at a certain location and then respond in. There again, it just depends on the situation of this.
I understand your questions, John.
The only thing I'm leading up to, we're all at a risk. I can go on a call tonight and get shot. That's a risk you're taking regardless, you know, whether it's an officer or an individual. You know, you're taking a greater, but everybody's at a certain risk.
Right. But there again, that's why you pay us to try to mitigate some of that risk. You know, we, we, we take on that burden so that, so that most people don't have to. That's not saying that nobody's ever going to have to face a risk.
I know for sure if I called 911, I want everybody to come, right?
You want everybody to come.
That's why we live in this city.
I want, I want, I want everyone.
That's what the TIF is coming.
Don't trust everyone.
Yeah, you can't get everybody.
Get yourself in violence.
Well, and we had a message.
What was the question?
For me?
I don't have a question.
Oh, I thought there was a question.
We, along those lines, you never know what you're going to, what you're going to get into. You know, I, my wife, when I went into undercover work, was very nervous about that. And I told her, honey, we're dealing with people that we know are potentially bad people. So we're going in with a heightened sense of readiness and, and I'm always with people that, that have my back in that situation. I'm not going to be acting alone. I'll have somebody there close by. Here, you don't know that the next car that you stop is going to be, is going to be grandma or grandpa, first somebody to drive or somebody that just knocked over a bank in, in Parkington. We had a call and I was telling them today, one of our, one of our officers responded to check the well-being of an intoxicated subject, which is a pretty minor, not a high alert call typically. He got there, the guy charged his car and was, was coming to attack him and he had to deploy some, some less lethal measures, which were not effective. They were deployed effectively, they were-
A taser.
They deployed the taser. The guy ripped the wrong gun, says, is that all you've got?
Oh.
And he was bare chested.
He was bare chested. Both leads went in and, and this was a week ago. You know, so I was, I was on duty. It was one where I was covering as, as the evening shift supervisor. He called out on the radio, taser's been deployed, subject's on a gun study and, and, you know, I stepped it up and got there and was able to assess, we got the item custody. But, but luckily, that was an officer who had a, a fair amount of experience and knew how to handle the situation without it getting out of hand. You know, unfortunately, you know, sometimes we get officers that are right out of the academy that, that don't have the, the extensive training and I think leaving them out, not unsupervised, but, but without the, the proper support is, is going to be a liability to the city.
I have one question.
What about these other time?
You got one, Sue?
Officer Bennett, a couple of weeks ago, I had to call 911 approximately where my father-in-law lives on Grass Street. And I just was sitting outside smoking a cigarette on the stoop and I noticed something between the storage units on the asphalt and it ended up being a body. Scared the hell out of me. The only thing I could think of was to call 911 because I was afraid to go over to whoever was laying there on the asphalt. I didn't know if they were dead and I didn't know if they were, you know, how do you say it? Pretending, you know, like a, like a, what do you call it?
Plain possum.
Yeah, plain possum. I could have gone over there. They could have had a knife, they could have had a gun. And I stayed out by the street and I called 911 and the officers came and the ambulance came because I didn't know if the individual was dead or not. He was laying flat on his stomach. He looked like he was completely out. Didn't know, didn't move for anything. And Officer Bennett came and I'm so thankful because I didn't know what to do. I was glad that they were there. I was very glad they were there.
Thanks, sir.
One thing that did come up during our conversation today was, was the expenditure for the camera. There was maybe a misunderstanding on that yesterday. What we decided to do, I think that we could cut that significantly, what that was intended for was, was a re-referring expense to lease the camera so that we'd have an annual expense of $4,000. If, with the board's approval, would cut that significantly, repair what we have and not have to renew it.
By significantly, you mean $8,000?
Cut eight.
You would cut $8,000, right?
Four. About $8,000.
So $8,000, reduce that to four and add eight to the column to the left. I don't know. I'd like your advice. Yeah, this, Halligan Calvert, I believe, requested after last night's meeting to be, get rid of everything we decided and reduce another one that, so we did that. Sue did that. I'd like to take credit for it, but Sue did it.
I asked for it.
Oh, you asked.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
Okay. I gave credit to the wrong guy.
That's all right. That happens all the time.
All right. Thanks, sir. Right? Yeah.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
You're doing what you're doing. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
So just for the sake of simplicity here, the $60,000 that you see in request included on the right, upper right-hand box has already been reflected in the expenses under the general fund. So with those items, plus the $8,000 that we just moved, there'd be a $214,609 cash carryover at the end of next fiscal year that's available.
Okay. Let's, and, and some more good news, and I don't know how we want to, I, Martin maybe has a good idea of how to look at this, but some more good news, I guess, came up today. I was talking to Sue and talking about our sales tax. Well, first of all, one, one item that did come up was that the, she had underestimated the income from the utility tax basically on the, on the charter franchise. And that's $8,000 more than what she had in the budget. So if you want to start adding, there's another $8,000 you can actually add that wasn't in the budget to the general revenue fund.
You know, when we talked about this yesterday, we were told that $22,000 was what we received. So, and I made the, I made the proposal that we cut that 798 to, to that amount that I asked them for $23,000. I don't know how everybody else feels, but since we were not told the correct figure, I mean, I, I think they should get the $23,000 and the rest goes into the general fund.
I agree.
The actual, the actual number was $23,500. That amount was wrong, officer.
I'm sorry. I'm just saying if we're going to stay the same, that's what it was.
I'm, I'm, we'll have to stay the same.
Stay the same. Stay the same at $23,000.
$23,000.
$23,500.
$23,500. Okay. So we're, we're moving over $65,000 to the general, to the general fund. Okay.
Is that right? That's $8,000.
Then we're taking out $15,000.
Yeah, that's right. We're adding $65,000.
Was it $20,000?
Seven thousand.
I heard the number of eight. You guys probably don't know.
Twenty-nine, $7,000 difference.
Was it a different $7,000?
Oh, from the 22.
Twenty-seven minus 22 is seven.
Okay.
Now you've got to put $1,500 in it. Bad. So the difference is 15.
Fifty-five. Okay. Then the other thing that I, I went and talked to her about was where we really stood on sales tax and she had 11 months versus the nine months that was in here. She had 11 months down and we kind of looked at that and it looks like we're going to end up with about $50,000 more in general revenue on the sales tax than what we provided. September comes in in a reasonable amount like it should. We, we're guessing about $50,000 more in sales tax, which would go into general revenue. The other, the other good, the other good side of that is next year, we left the sales tax number the same as this year. So provided that a sales tax doesn't change, you're looking at a $100,000 swing versus a, I mean, you gain a 50 next year in next year's budget also.
And it just keeps our head above water relative to the loss of the TIF revenue.
So I, you know, we're going to lose 90 in the TIF next year. I, Martin suggested, and there was one other thing that Sue had planned on moving another $50,000 over to parks just to supplement. And it looks like where she's at today, there's still $19,000 left in that account and we got one month left. So she don't think that the, we still got to tear down, the building's got to come out of there and salaries have to come out of there and there may be some other expenses, but we're not going to spend another $50,000 out of general revenue tab to move over to the park fund. So, I mean, you could, you could theoretically move, say it's $40,000. So there's another $140,000 if you wanted to use it for next year's budget. And Martin suggested, we won't really know to what the cash, to what the carryover is until obviously after the year's over. I think, yeah, he suggested, why don't we look at approving the budget the way it is with the cuts that we've made and the, and then maybe revisit it at the end of the year or starting the new year and see where those numbers actually come in as what we, what we've got left carried over. It sounds like good news. I mean, it did certainly, yeah. The other thing that we would know about then too would be a lot, a lot better idea of what are, what's going to happen on our insurance.
On the building.
Building and, and both our building insurance and our health insurance.
But we're a long way from where we were a month ago. You know, let me hide you. It's just amazing how well you folks have worked. Thank you.
Thanks for helping, Martin.
The last issue that before we would, before we do anything in the budget, we talked about it last night, there's certainly different feelings on the board about it is you've got it in front of you as far as, is there any kind of pay increase?
About, and I can say about that. I'm all favorable 2% budget increase for the opportunity for all employees that are paying on the managership review, we have the opportunity to add a 2% increase.
Another, maybe a suggestion out of, you know, maybe a suggestion, but certainly Martin brought it up today is, is you would have to do that today if you wanted to look at it after the fact and given what you had maybe to work with. I, I mean, if you want to put in the budget, great. If you wanted to postpone where you have the work numbers, I, just something considering. I'm saying that you got to act on it.
I like the thought of that one today that there are city employees, peace of mind that they're, they're, they're more protected now in terms of budget.
Personally, I can't see Eli Sheridan giving 3%.
I, I got some figures today and it's, can I get a feel of what the city is paying for health insurance for employees? And right now, we're paying for the employee, if it's a single person, $415 a month for insurance. And we expect it to go up 10 to 12%. That's what we're guessing. We're not really sure how it's going to come out on the insurance. I mean, if you do that, you're looking at 4150 to 4980 for one person, if it stays within that limit, to keep the same insurance. And that's each month. How in a family, it's like 1260 and I think the city pays $830. So if you start looking at that, you're looking at 83 or 90 bucks for a family each month that the city is paying more.
What's, what are those numbers based on? You don't, you didn't compromise any-
I don't know how many are family and how many are city.
Any HIPAA regulations to get those numbers to you?
No, I just asked Sue what the city pays for insurance.
But, you know, it's not, not a problem.
I mean, I think, I think that's something we should know. In order to run a business or anything, you got to know what your cost is. So anyway, these are some pretty good figures, I think. I don't have a number of how these, how many have families that they're doing and how many are single. But if you add them all up, you know, 20-something people, it comes to quite a bit of money. And if we get by a 10 or 12%, we'd probably be doing pretty good. But it's going to change. The insurance is going to change and the cost is going up all the time.
What was your number for, what would the city number say?
I was told that for individuals, $415 a month that the city pays. And then if you go 10, 12%, so, you know, let's figure that out. Now on the family, the city picks up more. And that brings up something else that if you're a single person, the city is paying more for a family and a single person does not get that benefit. The city is paying more for insurance for a family plan. But if you're single, you're only getting $400 and something dollars. So there's a discrepancy there.
There's about a 20 cent an hour difference. If you take your number of $400, $415 and you divide that by 2,000 hours, excuse me, 200. That wouldn't work. That was a year, not a month. That's 160 hours a month, right? So 400, what was your number?
415.
415. 415 for an employee for a single.
So that's $2.81 an hour, so we pay for our intern. The benefit the employee actually gets is worth $2.81 an hour. The benefit the employee actually gets worth $2.81 an hour. The family at $850, divide by 160, it's $8,000.
It's actually like 1,200 because a family's square.
But 1,260, but I was told.
So you calculated about $5 an hour, average employee.
So do you, I mean, I understand what you just said. You don't hire anybody that has families to save the money?
Maybe the single person should be compensated for what the family man is getting. I don't know. There may be the family man will pay the difference.
I don't know if that's a common practice. I don't want to interject too much into this conversation.
But what I'm getting at is that the city is putting out a lot of money to keep the same coverage. And to me, again, I keep saying it, that's a benefit.
It is a benefit.
Yeah, that's exactly that. Yeah, of course it's a benefit.
We've thought about the possibility of changing the policy relative to family insurance. We recognize that should you change it, you're basically just taking money out of the employee's net income. If they, whatever they have to pay is just money they have to spend that they weren't spending and it comes out of their net. And most employees arguably were hired with the expectation that they would make a certain hourly wage and there'd be a certain level of benefits afforded to them. And hopefully, that's what keeps them here to the extent that it does, aside from the fact that they really like working for Pam than me. But we don't have to do it forever. And so I investigated today the possibility of changing the policy for future employees. And so as we, people leave and people come in, the people who come in aren't necessarily entitled to the same level of benefit and they would know upfront that we're not covering all of your family. And they would make a decision to come in here with that knowledge and then eventually nobody would have that level of coverage. To do it just kind of with the stroke of the pen, to most people seems kind of harsh, unfair and against kind of the social contract we have, even though not a written contract with the employees. My fear was that doing that would create two classes of employees. There's a prohibition in the Fair Labor Standards Act against providing, say, the city administrator health insurance, but not the city clerk. We're both administrative employees. We both fit in the same class and we have to provide the same level of benefit to all comparable classes. Talked to the insurance company, they were kind of, was she watching? Talked to Frank and he said, you know, the issue is whether there's a reasonable basis for your decision. And I said, how about we just are not going to be able to afford it in the future? That sounds reasonable to me.
The practice is commonplace.
Yeah. So maybe what we ought to do is if, rather than, and you can still talk about whatever level of benefit you want to, but at a minimum, we ought to be thinking about changing the policy as we go forward.
I heard the UPS cut 15,000 employees that don't family cover.
Because their spouse already has insurance through their.
Well, carpenters, carpenters has working spouse program. If the spouse is able to take reasonable price, then they have to take it.
For a long time last night. Yeah, it's 8:30. Yeah, it sure is. Well, we're trying to do it.
Well, that's.
See, if you're several, you better just give them a higher 10 percent.
Several evans have cut these, the exact same things Waters talked about.
It's okay.
I got the board.
I was like this.
It's been a year, ever. Two, three decades. He can't really retire. There's a new guy coming. So we get those in the.
Some doing some though.
Of course, John. I mean, nobody goes out there.
Can I ask this? If you, if you have.
I'm ready to vote on it or side on it. We talked about it Monday last night. I don't think it might come to any terms tonight.
But then they can pay a small premium to cover their family.
We're covering back the salary, right?
So then they can still get the 3 percent and still be able to cover their payments.
Yeah. We did charge a very small premium today. It's really small. But that's the whole issue. We make more of that responsibility on the families, my estimates. I mean, that's the question we're talking about.
How does your employees feel?
Well, I'm sure obviously. But I think, I think.
That's the main.
I don't realize what's happening.
I tell you, I was.
Our renewal rate is 27 percent. We're not renewing.
Next year might be 30.
You know, the coverage that our employees are going to get is not going to be the same as they have now. They're going to have the same deductibles and increased co-bays and a lot of things. So they're going to lose benefits.
And then ask us to participate on.
I think today we are already doing something with the deductible, you know? And we did a few years ago, raised the deductible and we were playing the odds that we would pay part of the employee's part if it gets that high. That reduced our rates to one year. We managed to keep them down.
I think we should keep them the same by doing that.
Yeah, we managed to keep it the same. We have $500 deductible. We raised it to 1,000, left it with the employee the same, saying we would pick out the other 500. And you play the odds and it works.
Yeah, I think we're going to look at that this year, but the numbers are going to be higher.
Yeah. A lot of companies, I mean, a lot do the $4,000 deductible, sort of digits, six or four.
Oh, really? So, where do you want to leave? I think we should wait and see how this insurance falls out and what more is going to cost our employees and decide from there what we're going to do as far as the raise.
I want to adopt Martin's term as a social contract. I think we have a social contract in place and I am in favor of making three percent overall. Budget increase and then.
If they worked hard, they'd spend.
Martin and the department has to determine these raises to convince them who doesn't. But we need to have a head count when they raise.
Yeah, the last, last year, it was authorizing up to three percent and then the department directors and I decided we'd get what level. We didn't have three percent to them.
Yeah, it was just productivity and.
Yeah.
Ready to. That's what, that's what we did last year.
I think it worked pretty good, didn't it? In your estimation?
I think it worked fine. It's always a difficult thing to do when you tell an employee that you're not going to get the max because here's the reason that if you want it next year, you've got to change this behavior. Or you did it.
How do we resolve this issue at the table, right?
Okay, so we're looking at $30,000.
That's everybody knows.
That's the most.
Everybody gets three percent. We're looking at $30,000. So $30,000 comes out of the.
Anyone? Some of the.
Well, we don't have enough.
We went through all that. What we have to do, we have to vote.
Well, we don't have enough money in the roads as it is to really do anything. It may be a couple of small projects, but.
We'll get some.
And I don't know, just party what the council wants. If they fill that $30,000.
Last for a third time, how do we determine?
I just want to hesitate. Wait, wait. I'm against. From zero to, from zero to three, you have a number? Zero? I was trying to find my sheet. I don't know, two percent? That's 19,000.
It's a process.
And then that saves another.
You tell me what to do. We reflect it through the budget and you vote on the budget.
I think everybody should participate.
Kind of tell me, you're not inside what to tell me to do.
I mean, if an employee, are they, would they feel two percent is fair, knowing that $10,000 is going to our streets?
See, I like the idea of up to three, but not necessarily three for just whoever you feel deserves. Department heads, the department heads, if they feel that they want a three percent.
And that's what we did. I mean, we gave a certain percent.
Not everybody got three percent.
And they divided it out within your department, but they kept within that certain percent. So it could be two percent, it could be two, or three. Linda, what's your number?
That's, my number is up to three, no more than three, but not necessarily.
Based on performance value.
Based on performance, just like we did last year. I like that idea.
Two percent. Bob?
Yeah. With the performance value.
So what's your number?
Three percent.
John?
Probably all three with performance valuations.
Three with performance valuation.
Well, choose the same thing. That's what we did last year.
We're just typing in a vote here.
It's up to three, based on max of three.
Max of three.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm saying the max of two.
Right.
Oh, you're saying max of two.
Yeah. The same thing. So we have four threes and three twos.
Which isn't that far off.
No. All right. Okay, are we, is all the questions on the budget answered as far as you all are concerned? Where they can finish it up? Okay, so we'll come back with the final figure as far as what's available for roads or.
You got, we will, the things that we mentioned tonight, other than we're putting the $8,000 in there for the camera and the $5,500 in there for charter, we will add that to the, we will add that.
And we will adopt the budget without having made an allocation from the general fund to the transportation projects. And 60 days from now, we'll be back for you and say, hey, we drew the line. This is how much money is available beyond what we had adopted in our budget. We're going to amend the budget. We have some transportation.
Transportation's kind of a fix. We'll be able to add that.
From those. Why?
So are we still subtracting that one police officer?
No.
He was never subtracted.
We dropped the cameras by the eight.
Yeah, he was, he was never out.
And then you'll know more about insurance.
Thirty days from now, we'll have lots of questions answered. We'll probably have a work session before we, we're going to have to adopt the budget next month. I will not be at the next meeting, so do it out. And then we'll come back the following month with the final figures. And you can then decide how much money you want reserved and how much money you want to spend on load and which projects you want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for watching Channel 798.
Thank you for watching Channel 798. Hi, thank you very much for watching Channel 798.